All right, Bannan County Commissioners are in session Thursday, October 2nd. We do have an amendment to the agenda which is including the burn ban extension. So I would entertain a motion if there's no discussion on that.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion that we go ahead and approve the amended agenda and that we start out with the Board of Ambulance.
I think that is a fantastic motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chief, we get to see your smiling face first thing.
Good morning Commissioners, Ron Hearn, Bannan County Ambulance District and Boctell Fire. Just quickly this morning coming before you to request acceptance of a grant through the Idaho EMS Save. This is the grant through the State of Idaho for agencies to purchase vehicles and equipment. We initially were not received notice that we were not awarded this grant this summer, but then something must have fallen through with another grantee and they contacted us asking if we were still interested in so now we're before you to receive, to accept the grant. The intention for this grant is to purchase another cot and auto load kit for the new ambulance that we have being built right now. Should you choose to accept the grant, we will complete the paperwork with the State of Idaho and we'll come back before you for the disbursement and the approval for the capital purchase. The local match will be about $30,000. This grant is for $40,000.
Those costs are just getting expensive, aren't they?
They are, but they are, they are very valuable and they really have been a game changer in the industry. You see them on most ambulances now.
It's the same price as the Tahoe.
Yeah.
Well, I have no problem with that. Any questions from anybody?
No.
All right, then I would move that we would approve the grant acceptance and exit the Board of Ambulance. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Kyle.
Good morning, Kyle Burmester, Public Works Director. Back before you, we went out for bid proposals for the Roden Bridge roof rehab and replacement. We received five different bids. Then our review committee reviewed it. We were all going with the same one. It was the low bid. It was through Thomas D. Robison Roofing Company. We did have them do an extra attachment on there is 80 mil versus 60 mil. The 80 mil has a 30-year warranty versus the 60 mil has a 20. Everybody reviewing it figured our best bet was to go with the 80 mil, which is just a, it was 5,000 something difference, 5,697 difference to go with the 30-year. We felt that that was our best option and it's still, at that price, we would be paying for the roof $194, 406 with the 80 mil, which is lower than the other bids with 60 mil. And what that's doing, I know you're aware, but that's cleaning off some of the old stuff on the roof that looks like it was done in the 50s or whenever and that's where we're having some leaking problems and then they'll seal that up, do the whole roofing, new rain, drip edge, and then we are removing the satellite or the dish for IT. We have a couple dish that are just sitting up in our blocks. So that'll make us pull for that too, so.
And this, this will not be affected by the remodel, so we're not paving a road and tearing it back up.
No, yeah, this will be nothing to do with any master plan with any new buildings.
Okay, very good. Any questions?
When's the timing?
I'm sure they're gonna get right on it.
They're ready to go today. Any questions, comments, or concerns over there?
We're all about to shut that one.
Yeah, woo-hoo.
Yeah, we actually are way under what we had estimated, so.
Okay, very good. So I'll make the motion, we go ahead and award that contract to...
Thomas D. Robison.
What he said.
We have letters here to go on that.
Which does improve, does increase, does include the upgrade of the material.
Yep, the upgrade to 80 mil.
In that motion, signing the letters.
Those awarding and those not awarded. Okay, I'll accept that addition.
Okay, we have a motion with a friendly amendment. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Good job filling in. Tori, right on time.
Tori, enter Bannan County Cor. And I'm here for the discussing lights. Commissioner.
And I, I haven't had a chance to talk to Jonathan. He hasn't been around or I haven't seen him, so the last I talked to Jonathan, he'd had a different statement than you had told me on the lights.
Sure.
And so I haven't talked to him.
Do you wanna see if somebody can step in?
John is in court right now. He's doing a child protection case. He just texted me, told me he can't be here this morning.
What about Ian?
If we can get Ian, we can text him.
So what's, tell me the purpose of the lights?
So the lights are to protect us when we're on the interstate, taking an interstate fatality. So we have to sometimes block a lane or we have to just get through traffic as we navigate. By the time my office gets called, we have no idea what the traffic is gonna be as we roll into it. So when you're looking through a rearview mirror, I look like another motorist just trying to maybe jockey for position opposed to actually going to do something as an official capacity. So we use lights to get there safely, mitigate any secondary crashes or anything like that. But then once we're on scene, we also have lights in the rear to protect us.
So the sheriff's office there, and their lights are going.
Sure.
And, and so why are you blocking traffic and not them?
Because I have to sometimes load a seatman in the vehicle. So by the time they get there, they're parking right next to. When I get there, it's after the fact and sometimes we'll have to get as close as we can.
And then if, if the purpose of this is to let people know who you are and what's going on, your decals on all your vehicles are really tiny.
It's not to let us know, it's not to let them know who we are. It's just to let them, it's to make them aware so they move over.
But it is, I mean, it's to let them know that you're the coroner.
Well, I mean, I'm the coroner regardless. It's the, it's the move over law. If you have the lights, they're gonna move over and they're gonna get in the other lane like they're supposed to. Opposed to like, say if I used yellow lights. Cause I did have this discussion with Idaho State Police. I asked their preference on what they believe we should be running. They also said red and white. That is their preference, that's what they would like us to run. So that's, that's kinda why we're in the position. The only thing that we didn't know is that we had to have the, the letter, which at this point we do have. We went through their application process, we've been through their inspection process, and we have everything we need to make us legal in what we're doing.
So do you use the lights for responding above the speed limit?
Negative. It is not to run code. It is not, that has to be lights and a siren. We do not have those privileges nor do we want those privileges. There is not a situation or circumstance that would require me to do that. We just want to make sure that we can safely get to the scene if we come up and there's traffic. Just because motorists are looking through their rearview mirror, they're seeing us make maneuvers around and try and get up to the scene, they have no idea why. Regardless of the markings that are on the side of the vehicle or not, through the rearview mirror, we look like any other motorist. So that is the, the purpose of why we want them to know that it is for an official capacity, not just trying to jockey for position.
I had volunteer firefighters that put lights in their vehicles.
I'm sure.
Wanted to go above the speed limit, which they didn't have the right to do either.
Okay, well, this, this is not bad. This is strictly just a warning device as if we get into the row of emergency vehicles that are already there, we are not blocking the people that are in front of us, their emergency lights, plus we're also protecting ourselves and the vehicles and the investment that we have as well. So as you requested, you know, kind of as far as which colors and things like that, I've spoke with Idaho State Police, I've got their preference, I've asked them their opinion on that. They do not believe that we should run yellow lights because it looks like construction workers. They said people don't pay attention to that, they will not move over in the same fashion as red and white lights. So the preference that they have recommended to me is red and white lights.
And that's the last I talked to Jonathan.
Right.
And he said it was the amber lights.
Yeah, and I understand that. And that's like I said, we are legally within our rights, we have the authorization from Idaho State Police to do so. So we're just working within the scope of what we should be.
Well, I still believe that the, the emblems on the side of the vehicle should be larger than what they are.
Oh, and I can speak to...
I think they should be identified as the coroner.
Okay, and I can speak to that. The emblems are completely separate reasons, the emblems, because when we go to somebody's house who's dealing with a tragedy or a loss or anything like that, when we park in front of that home, if we were to mark it like a, let's say a patrol rig, okay? We're announcing to the neighborhood and everybody else that something happened in that home and I don't believe that that's our right. I think it's our job to serve them and it's their right to tell who and when, if and how they choose. That's not ours. If they figure it out, that's okay. There are some things that are unavoidable.
And I don't think you're telling anybody anything. I mean, you're the coroner, you're there for it.
That's correct, but what we're telling them is somebody died. That's the only reason I would be there.
Somebody died?
Law enforcement, right, but my point being, that's not our place. That's theirs. That's their loss and that's theirs to be able to tell who they want to, when they want to.
Well, I, I think that you're, you're contradicting yourselves in saying, I want lights to tell people who I am and then, but I don't wanna tell people who I am.
I didn't say that I wanted lights to tell people who I am. I wanted lights to make sure that they're moving over and to protect our vehicles, equipment, and personnel working on the scene.
Which is saying that I'm the coroner and that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Alan, can you give a brief, you know, why we're asking you here?
Yeah.
Do you have any thoughts on that or talked to Jonathan about it at all?
Um, briefly.
Okay.
So, um, the question is whether or not lights can be placed on the vehicle and at least that's my understanding of the question. And, or who, who authorizes or who, who has the final say on that perhaps as part of that question. The ultimate, uh, final say, it is county vehicle, so the county commissioners would be able to have the, the ultimate say on that. There is however, um, an issue that Mr. Danner also is an elected official and to some extent he also needs to have some deference on how he does his, or he operates his department. And so it does kinda put it in a, in a tricky situation where it's a county vehicle, county property, so commissioners have the ultimate say on that. But with that caveat that, um, that Mr. Danner would, would be, to some extent, he needs to be allowed to operate his, his department and do the things that he needs to do. Not exactly a clear answer for you, but...
What did we bring you down here for? Sorry, Alan, couldn't resist.
Is what he's wanting to do legal?
Isn't that the question?
That was not the question, that was...
Okay. I think that's part of it. As far as running red and white lights, we, there is a statute that we are not within. They do not recognize the coroners, but there is a ability to put in an application to ask for that ability, which it's through an application process through the Idaho State Police. The Director of Idaho State Police is the one that grants that authority. We have done so and we have that authority and then furthermore, per the conversations and questions that have been asked, we've asked them the direction on what color of lights would be their preference. They actually prefer us to run red and white, so that is where we're at.
Okay, they prefer red and white?
That's correct.
All right, speaking with John, I, he felt that it was legal, but that part of the question, it's legal to put lights on. He wasn't as keen on the idea of red and, well, he said he was on board with the amber but not the red and blue. I don't know the analysis of that.
And that's what he told me last. After reading the statute, he told me that he was on board with the amber but not the red and white.
And since then, yeah.
And went to the State Police and went or had a different, but I haven't seen that statute either that says that...
Yeah, and just to clarify, since then, I have spoken with Ian and Jonathan and explained to them that, you know, cause we're not running blues at all. We're running red and white and that is preferred that, like, we've already had an inspection through Idaho State Police, they see exactly what we're running, why we're running. We have that authorization. I think the understanding was, yes, if you're outside of what's legal, of course, we're not gonna do that, but as long as we're inside. And that's again where it would just be up to their preference as far as that, that's kinda, I understood that, but I understand they're also busy is that they were going to come to the meeting and we were gonna talk about it.
Yeah, now they're with the Attorney General's Office, so I apologize.
No, you're just fine.
That's the information I got.
All right, good. Ian, you got anything?
You know, I was thinking about that the other day. I was, I didn't think of what coming across there when somebody did a rollover out there. And I watched in my rearview mirror, lights coming up and they were Solomons, which was full blown yellow. Everybody moved over to allow the, to wrecker truck, which is, they're, they're running amber.
Sure.
And I think to the most part, I thought everybody was, you know, conveniently moved over for the safety of the vehicles coming through there. Obviously, I don't think there, there was no ambulance there or anything else, so I don't think anybody was required though. So I, I agree, the ambulance isn't, I'll tell you what, I like the red and white on the red and, yeah, red and white, because that is a, it is an emergency. I probably on the part that I think if I was going to err, I would say based on, you're not gonna save any life other than maybe yours, you know, not wanting to get hit or whatever. I would love to see us go with the amber just because I don't think we want to exacerbate the problem and make it look like it is an ambulance when it's just a, you know, a service vehicle, almost like a wrecker. And so even though I understand the red, I think I'm more comfortable to start with the yellow one. And I don't, where are you talking about putting those, on the dash?
So the lights...
So they're not gonna be up on a rack?
No, we're not.
They're just on the dash?
The lights that are in the vehicles currently are on the dash and then the headlights flash, taillights flash, and then there's a bar in the back.
I, I would think that that should be adequate and I, and no way I want you to be in harms danger, but I think needing to be there safely is more important than be there in speed. People will move over, I think for the bulk of the people would go on that. So I'm, I'm probably leaning more to the, to the amber as, as a service vehicle, like a wrecker or whatever. We're not there to, we're not even there to direct traffic. We're not there to have emergency medical technicians. There may not be the urgency that I would think that the red and the white.
So just to clarify, it's not emergency, it's just to be seen.
And that's with that, to me, I'm more comfortable with the, the yellow.
Okay.
And just because it is recognizable, it is a vehicle that needs to get there, but people can slide over, it will protect you, I think, front and back. I mean, that's, that's a long ways around it, but I, to me, I'm more comfortable starting that way than to push the envelope and go to the red. We can always go to a red if we get more, I don't know what the difference is. Is the, is the light bar, can it be interchangeable? Can you move to red?
We would have to buy, we have, so currently, just, we're, we all have red. That's already purchased, that's what we're running. And that is based on the conversations that we already had and understood as far as being, this is what we should be running. That's why we did that. And it was my understanding that Mr. Moser had a question as to why we have lights and things like that. I don't necessarily think the color got brought up was because statute was lifted and they said, yeah, we don't see where you guys are recognized in here, which is fine. As the coroner, we've seen that statewide, that we are behind the ball as far as being recognized in certain things and needing to do certain things. So we went through the proper channels, made sure that we got the authorization to do that and working with, cause Idaho State Police is basically the primary of who runs crashes on the interstate. So that's why we worked with them and we asked their opinion, given their experience and their, what they would like to see. And that's why we are where we are. I think the question, this came as far as putting things into vehicles. And this originally, I mean, if we were mounting things on vehicles, I think that absolutely that would be a conversation. These are not drilled holes, they're not hardwired in there, they're not, they are merely placed in the vehicles to use in operation while we're out on the scene. I mean, it's, that's kinda where I've tried to do the right thing and make sure that we're protected and covered and do everything like that. I don't necessarily, I mean, we'll talk to legal, but I don't necessarily think it's a question of what color we're running. That's gonna come down to what we believe is safest and how we choose that.
But that color comes out of state statute.
I understand that, but we're within state statute with the authorizations that we have. So it's not a question of legality, we're within the legal right to do and we're basing that on the preference from Idaho State Police. I believe the question is here is what we can put into vehicles that you guys authorize or don't authorize as far as whether they can be placed in the vehicles. That's, if I understood.
Well, I'm on the other side of this argument. I'm with Tori for a change. How do you like that, Tori?
Wow.
I think we're a little bit overreaching here as commissioners. Again, I go back to what Alan just said, as an elected official, Tori has the right to manage his department in the way that he sees fit. And if he wants to put lights in there and he has approval from the state police, which has jurisdiction over the highways, then I'm good with that. And he's not putting something into this a permanent thing. If he put yellow lights in and then decides later to go to red, then we've just paved a road to pick it up and tear it up and pave it again. So I'm with Tori on this one. I think, go ahead, but do you guys wanna make a motion on it? We'll do that.
What are we talking cost wise?
Well, he's already spent the money.
Yeah.
But it's, okay, but even with that, what, what cost are we talking about? We talking 500 bucks, 2,000 bucks?
Probably a thousand.
Okay.
Per vehicle?
No.
So?
No, yeah, the way we, so when we looked at originally setting up lights, right, we looked at the other agencies currently, I've looked at the sheriff's office, right, this is within county, it's about $5,000 estimated per vehicle. I tried to figure out how we can save money and move things around and, and still accomplish the goal without, but we, we suffer from longevity pieces too. Like they won't maybe last as long as them, but we get the use out of what we need and we don't use them as often, right? They're running and doing all kinds of things. We're not. So we're covered for the purpose of which we need to be. But we use systems that are not hardwired and things like that, that, to me, that's preventative maintenance because that's not playing with the electrical system or wiring something into the electrical system that could fail or cause issues and if they're plug and play, so we can figure that out. But the biggest, I mean, my understanding of this conversation was whether or not we could install those or have those in the vehicle legally, from a legal standpoint, yes, we can. And I have done the due diligence to speak with the people that we work with that are on the side, that asked them their preference and that's what we went with. I, I, my two cents, and it's not my decision, but my two cents, listening to the whole thing, is that you're better off to go with the preference of the state police. I'm with Jeff that he's an elected official, within his right, he's not mounting, he's not changing, he purchased some equipment. And if he is within the right and especially taking the advice of the state police, then we're making it more difficult than it needs to be really.
I wanna set policy.
On?
On running the lights. I wanna make sure that your people do not think that they're running code.
Okay.
I want a policy out there. Because that's, that's my biggest fear. I've already dealt with this, I've dealt with volunteers and we had the guy up at the event center that put a light in his car and then start carrying a gun. We had to get rid of. I mean, just because you have lights doesn't mean you get to pretend like you're the officer.
No, that's...
Or the ambulance.
So what is search and rescue or the volunteers that come and help mitigate traffic, what are they running?
Their search and rescue runs red and white.
So they're running red and white?
That's correct.
As search and rescue?
Mm-hmm. But they are under that code as well.
Okay.
Under the supervision of the sheriff.
Okay.
So, and I can tell you from years and years of experience of being out on the interstate, running traffic and being in traffic, that is what motorists are seeing and they're moving over for.
No doubt. I mean, red and white will, does get your attention. I'm, I'm with Commissioner Moser, I, I think if we go with this, we need to have a, some guidelines of, cause you don't need that going through the streets of Boctell.
No, no.
I do agree on that.
And running code is a separate...
I'm not even talking about code.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand that, but what I'm saying is my authority has nothing, I cannot run code, I don't have the authority to.
I just shouldn't be in traffic control in any way either that we're using that to, that's the state police's problem is to move, to move traffic. I think that's who, what they're trained to do. I, I, I'm okay with that as long as we know what our, in the immortal words of somebody that used to sit in these chairs, where is your, of now, I can't even remember the word to use, purview.
Where's my purview?
Where's the purview of using the yellow versus the red and on the freeway versus going through Bannan County Road, so...
Funeral homes also use red and white for the same exact purpose. So as far as that goes...
Let's, let's end this, we've had enough.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the lights for the coroner with the addition that he includes a letter from the state police and a written policy on usage for insurance purposes and process and procedure. Any further discussion? Any discussion? I feel bad enough. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would, but I would like to see, um...
You said yes.
It only got to my lips.
I heard it, Nancy, did you hear it?
But I would like to see a statement from the prosecutor's office that actually is part of this policy, that they've signed off on this policy too.
That's fair. Yeah, that's fine. I think any policy, that would go legal anyway.
If we're gonna circle waggon, let's make sure that you guys have signed off on that, our insurance has signed off on it and everything else. That, that would be the only thing I'd like to see is make sure we don't have to revisit this because of something we overlooked.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
And I'm completely fine with that. I don't have a problem with that.
All right, thanks. Now I'll say ayes.
Okay.
Double ayes.
Actually, you just said aye, aye.
Yes.
Delayed.
Mr. Davenport.
Thank you, Alan.
Thanks.
Good morning, Kristy Davenport. I am before you to talk about one of the parcels that came to you on the 13th of May for delinquent property taxes. So I'm just gonna read a rundown that Misty put together because she and Jen are very busy right now. So on the 13th of May during the tax deed hearing, $350 a month minimum payment starting June 2025 was agreed to. And if that payment was made, they would waive the interest for 2021 and through 2024 taxes. If two payments in a row were missed, then the agreement was, would be null and void. On the 19th of June, Mr. Hill called Misty and said that he was waiting for some funds to come in and stated that he would be in around July 1st, 2025 to make his payment. On September 4th, Misty had still not heard from him, so she called him, no answer, so she left him a voicemail letting him know that it was imperative that he call her back and that the agreement waiving the interest was now null and void since he has not made any payments. She also said to expect the county to move forward with the tax deed process. She tried again on the 17th of September to no avail and gave me a call and let me know about the situation. know about the situation. I called him on the 18th and the 30th to let him know that, and he was invited to today's meeting. Um, and I had to leave a message both times, so we have not heard back from him. It is for parcel number RP, RP HIV 000200.
Okay. So we've already made the decision, we said we'd move him forward with the tax deed, so.
Correct.
So I'll go ahead now.
That's where I would say we were at.
Correct. I agree.
I'll let the treasurer's office know.
Okay. We don't need that in the motion, do we, since we've already talked about it? It wouldn't hurt?
I'll make that in the form of a motion that we move forward with the tax deed, because we've heard nothing from the individual on this parcel.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well, the trigger was already set. If they didn't comply, here's, here's the then, so I'm with that.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, burn ban, resolution 2025-66, and that is extending the burn ban through October 15th. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, but we'll let that happen another time. When he's here.
I have a heck of a time passing something you can't enforce.
Okay.
Just for the record.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then that takes us to the claims agenda.
Just a comment before we get involved with all this other stuff.
Okay.
I had a visit with Kristy this morning. We had an officer that drove a vehicle to Salt Lake, and then it quit on him, the engine problems. And, uh, we had it in the process of buying a trailer. We'd had it in next year's budget, and so Buddy had called to ask if he could still get that trailer. Says go get the trailer, and then we don't pay to send a wrecker down there to pick up the vehicle. It'll be on the approval, basically, for our claims next week, but we might as well utilize the monies that we have instead of spending more money and utilize-
It was this year's budget, because we're already in this year's budget.
We're in October now, so we won't, but-
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, the monies were put aside.
I was just going to say, the budget on that is $26,000, the trailer's $25,999. So it's going to be within budget. It was going to be on next week's agenda, but due to the special circumstances, we're just hoping it can be approved.
Is this the one we were trying to utilize with the weed and bug, you know, and utilize it?
It's not, it's not trailer.
So it's budgeted in county operations, and I'm hoping that you will allow Kristy Davenport to sign off on that, because it's, it follows budget and everything else. Um, and then that way we can also have a check for those, for them next Friday.
Okay. So we need a motion on that, since you were leading on that, you want to make that motion, Commissioner?
Oh, I had this one question. Should have had the coroner here.
I'll look at it while you make your-
Should have had the coroner here.
Same question I got. So you're, you're looking for a motion to approve the purchase of the trailer?
Well, we need probably two, then, one for the claims and then one for the trailer. We'll treat the trailer as a separate item today.
Okay, so, and this was, what's the description on that?
Um, I'm going to pull, I'm going to get the invoice for it. It's a, it's, the vendor is Shiva Shade, and it just says Precision Cargo Max Large Transport 918-64. I want to see that that's-
Four.
Because we already have the trailer something, and it's just maybe an accessory. So let me, let me check on this one, and you guys do that stuff.
Sorry, I didn't get that until you came in.
Oh, you're good. Also, there's a, there's an authorization needed for an online security. So we need to authorize, uh, Kristy Clouser to submit this credit application electronically. How about I make the motion then, since we got multiple things going? I move that we approve the claims agenda with the following items. Authorize Kristy Clouser to complete the electronic submission for Western Systems-
That's what it is, okay.
Uh, credit application. And authorize the purchase of the trailer previously discussed by Rowan Bridge, kind of ahead of schedule.
A couple of questions on that. Are all the funds for the memorial building used up now?
I don't know. Um, and honestly, we're paying next, we're going to end up paying up for 25 claims next week as well.
Okay, because I just noticed those-
People did not pay attention to that.
A lot of these must have been accumulating, because it was long, and the floor, so I just was curious of whether we have used all of them.
We hadn't paid anything since June. Um, so after this week, I can look and see what we've received, and if we've got anything else that's going to be paid next week.
More of a curiosity, the other one, and maybe Mr. Moser, but have these four invoices that we paid to the county of Ada for $9,550, I would love to see the total amount per year that we are spending to that GL code.
What, I need the GL code, not the-
Uh, 11-0106-67300, to autopsies, I mean-
So you just want to know what we're paying in on?
Well, it's $2,300 evidently, when, every time we run one of them over there.
Or more.
I'm curious of how many during the year, uh, I'd like to see the total amount, and maybe the numbers, just for curious, of what we're spending to-
If you remember, you do have access, that you can pull that line out.
I know.
Take that.
But yes, I will pull that in email.
I was curious, because I was looking at it, and I thought, what am I missing? Because I, I mean, we're paying $9,500 just this, this claims period for autopsies.
And unfortunately, it varies year to year. I think yes, under this year versus like last year.
Last year, we had to put more money into it.
Yeah, you just can't control on me.
I've just, but I'm looking for a general rule of thumb.
60,000, hopefully put in the budget for a couple of years.
We had enough to buy new lights.
But, and I was mostly, mostly curious about that one right there, if I'm reading that correctly.
But that brings up, what was the answer on that one?
So, I have one thing at a time.
Hey, I asked first.
Yeah, $87,000 in there this year, we had 85 the last two years for autopsies. Uh, those are transport bags, so those essentially are body bags. But that's the description that was on the invoice.
Extra-large transport. I didn't know who he was transporting.
Well, what-
America is growing.
We need to probably have departments start putting descriptions, so that it, we know body bag versus a transport bag. Because it looked like a cargo transport.
Yeah.
Which essentially would be body bags.
Could be a lot of things.
Why is he so, the mix of-
I actually wondered if we had to rent something to haul somebody, the way, the description.
Yeah, so it's a weird description, but-
All right, is there any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
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 And Ken, I will get you what we've spent on autopsy, sure.
Well, and I was curious on the, again, if we had, what we had spent on the memorial building, if there was still some hanging fruit that didn't get purchased, I'd just love to have that information.